Good evening, everybody. My call is for this is thirty. Welcome to the Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three edition of the Home School Board Meeting. We have four of the five representatives, the Secretary, I was not in the meeting tonight, and Peter joined by Slade, who is the Speaker here, Dr. Tobias. And we've got a busy Peter, also the district board rep. You'll be hearing from her in a little bit. Slade, would you mind? And please, I'm going to go up the rack. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the thirteenth and eleventh amendment.
I'll take this to agenda item two point zero one. It's an action item to approve our regular meeting agenda. And please, I motion to approve our regular meeting agenda. Sure, I move to approve action item two point zero one. That's second.
My second.
Moving to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. That moves us to agenda three point zero one, which is our public comment. We've got two folks here signed up. And just quickly, as a reminder, each person will be given three minutes per topic to comment, and a maximum of twenty minutes per meeting. One topic will be allowed. Each speakers whose comments are less than three minutes in length may not defer their remaining time to others. If there are multiple speakers on one topic, speakers may be limited to points if you do not have express. Any person wishing his or her comments retained as part of the formal record may submit prepared statements to the board secretary prior to the oral presentation. The president may or terminate an individual's statement, one of which is to lengthy, personally corrected, abusive of the senior level. Comments or concerns relative to district personnel will not be heard in public. Rather, they should be directed through the complaints concerning school personnel or programs, policy four two two zero. Formal presentations must be scheduled with the superintendent in writing, or later than Tuesday, noon, one week, preceding the meeting. And I will talk to you when I have this up. Now, please.
I just want to speak a little bit on behalf of myself, Warren. I've been on several committees in the last twenty-two, twenty-three years, and I've gotten meetings of several board members. And after meeting them, I have a great deal of respect for all of your hopefully vice versa. Communication's always been a really good thing. You gave a presentation for the budget committee and safety committee, but our safety committee made recommendations to you several, probably a bunch ago. I agree with it one hundred percent. However, two items or issues that were beyond the scope of our committee I'd like to address tonight. And I believe the first question asked after a shooting will be, why don't you have a police officer in every building? Answer is going to be close to a million dollars. And why not allow willing staff members to carry weapons with training? Answer I believe is lively. You need to have those questions before yourselves to discuss until that does happen. We have a good answer. That is the job of the school department. But last evening, at the bond meeting, you toured the high school, saw the vocational areas. This is why I endorsed and supported the bond issue back then. I saw students, teachers, staff, board members, all have great pride in this building. I knew this side of this elephant golf course, the dirt, the gravel, the walls, finally the roof. Without a roof, it wouldn't rain on us quite often. Seeing that final tour last night of that building brought back so many memories, because myself and Valerie and other people were on the building compliance committee. And it's so rewarding to see that still, boy, the goosebumps just came down, the pride overwhelming why I was so happy to support that. I had a lot of my residents, constituents, why did you ever support this attack? It's going to go up, but because of the vocational programs. Why I did that. You know, before that time, you could, that's a levy or bond issue. I was partly responsible for a lot of it, wasn't it? Because you had not completed the new transportation center on Tetris. That was a promise they made and had not kept. That's why people voted against it. So that's where the phrase came about, promises made, promises kept. And that has how we got a sixty-nine percent favorable rating, approval rating from the voters, have a very happy effect. Also, in two thousand and four, we remodeled the home elementary school, and that was class school of the built nineteen twenty-six and twenty-seven. I remember my mother carrying her books up from the other school where the old transportation building was, had carried up to the new high school. So anyhow, in two thousand and four, this happened, we were seventy-fifth class reunion. The day that facility was opened and remodeled, Mike Perry dancing, let us go into areas you're not supposed to be, and got some pictures. That was a very rewarding thing for myself. And now, in twenty twenty-six, we have the home of one hundred. So I've seen the seventy-fifth anniversary of the school, the hundredth anniversary coming up at school, and I just realized tonight before I was going to turn this in, it's my sixtieth anniversary, my high school class, and twenty twenty-six also. Anyhow, basically, I am very grateful to be part of this committee, community, and committee at nearly seventy-five, it's still happening. So I want to thank all of you for your participation and thanks. Should I present? Do you like this one? Thank you, Warren.
Thank you.
Thank you all. It was cold. One more. And I'm going to give you my sign here. Thanks, Warren. You're welcome. Next to you, Val, how are you doing?
Good evening, board president and representative superintendent. And Warren, I want to iterate that I have some fond memories of serving the long-term state committee with you in preparation of putting that high school into action. I'm here again tonight to continue on a journey with the district in celebrating the wonderful things we have to celebrate, and we, the people, and web, and other things going on, but also to think thoughtfully about some of the things that Warren actually mentioned, and what the throughput is to continually have the support of our community when we need to ask for their support with respect to levies and the work that we're doing in the district. So just because I'm not here in a board meeting doesn't mean I'm not listening and watching the work of the board, because it is still a part of my heart. And as I reflect back on the last board meeting, there was just some things that I wanted to bring forward in that spirit of staying connected to the community with whom we are aiming for purposes of sustainability in this district. One thing is the policies that the board lives by and runs this district by. And there was a comment made, and I appreciate it from Mr. Hanson, that saying simply because there's no board dialogue related to the passing of a policy, doesn't mean that there's a conversation that's going on one-on-one or outside the board. But we don't get to see that unless you bring it forward. Each agenda item, each of you has three minutes allocated. Go ahead and share with us your findings of those one-on-one conversations that are leading you to a support or non-support of a particular item. Otherwise, we don't get to hear that if it's not part of the board dialogue or questioning. The other thing is also similarly with committee work, and Pete, I don't even pick you out of the crowd, but last time there was the finance report, and there was the comment made that you meet with staff beforehand, wrote up relative to finance reports, but we don't hear that dialogue. And I think if I were still on the board, as well as sitting on this side, I would appreciate hearing what our representatives from the different committees and assignments, the work that they're doing, the conversations they're having, the ideas that are living along, and the ask that's being made of staff on behalf of the whole board and on behalf of the district. We're not seeing that. That's the work of the board. I just want to say that I think the more we see of that, and I don't want to make meetings long, we've got three minutes for each topic, each board member, but give us a view into the experience that you're having, and the contributions you're making, and the hard questions you're asking. As far as the Tahoma one hundred, I want to offer that same thing. I'm about out of time because we started the clock tightly. I participated in Tahoma one hundred. Great turnout, let's listen, let's continue to spread the net even wider, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Val. That brings us to agenda item. I have a couple of points here. One, our student board represent to different board, and we've got Slade here to forward.
Welcome. Hi, good afternoon, everybody. So recently, we had a bear day this weekend. So for those of you who don't know, this is a leadership retreat for typical high school students, and it's a really awesome experience. We haven't gotten to do it during the pandemic, and we got to come back and do it this year. And it's been a very cool opportunity to bond and really build those strengths, those team-building skills. And additionally, we have leadership teachers and administrators attend WACBA, which is a leadership conference for leadership teachers across the state of Washington. So recently, we also had four students from Tahoma High School speech debate qualify for, it's exciting, qualify for nationals. It's a very big accomplishment. And keeping in that theme, we also had Mr. Gellagani, who's the speech debate coach. He was nominated as the speech debate coach of the year. So that's a very big, very big achievement. Girls' basketball also got to third in the state. That's wild. It's the furthest we've gotten in a long time. And our boys actually had a winning record this season, which is really cool. Students at Tahoma High in coordination with Byam Naval Place, a local shelter, have also started a textile factory. Now, this is something we haven't really paid attention to in the past, but it seems so much success that we are now struggling to transform the clothes rather than receive the estimations. And to conclude, or second from concluding, Tahoma High School is hosting its culture fair on March twenty-first, I believe, from six to eight P M. It's a great opportunity for students from across the Tahoma School District, and just to really get to know their community, get to know the cultures involved in their community. And lastly, Shadow Lake just wrapped up their fundraiser on Spirit Week this past week and concluded it with a bubble run fundraiser on March ninth. And to wrap it up, although she's not here today, I wish Emma, who's our fellow student board rep, a very happy birthday.
Well, that brings us to section five of our agenda. And as we move into the presentation, discussion, and action portion of our agenda, I'd remind my fellow board directors that we have agreed to use Robyn, who will ensure that each member has equal opportunity to speak, and we will keep our discussion length for agenda item to twenty minutes, which I will honor an individual board member discussion to three minutes for agenda item, which we see a lot of. You start your time will begin with the first point as they speak, and will continue through the response, the responses that are provided. And with that, it's a very special evening. That brings us to agenda item five point zero one, which is our Tahoma High School lead the people demonstration. We have four wonderful students here to show us how lead the people works. They have made their way all the way to state and won, and now they're preparing to make their way to Washington, D.C., which is a tremendous accomplishment. We're so proud, and we'll let you all take it from here. And this is Wolfick. Hello.
Hello. My name is Savannah Brooks. Hello, my name is Savannah Brooks, and I lived in Germany for four years.
Salam, saya adalah orang Barca, dan saya berada di sana. Hai, saya adalah orang Barca, dan saya berada di sana.
Hola, mi nombre es Julia. Hi, mi nombre es Julia, and I'm currently living in Spanish, so you can call me from Germany.
Namaste, bienvenido. Hello, my name is Epi T, and both of our parents are American here from India. And we have all of us, as you can see, are the amazing advisors of the National League and Tahoma High School. Thank you for so much support for our new corporate. So what we start with is at your desk, I put an action item on the, you don't mind the desk. So if you can just read this, this is the question. And what they'll do is they'll respond to it, and then they'll go back to all of you to ask anything you want. I've got a couple of sample questions. You absolutely go and ask those, ask them any person who's in the room. So that's, that's what creates this whole thing for, okay? Got it?
Okay. This is a little fancy. All right. I didn't change the Constitution. The equality principle was there from the start. I just was an advocate for seeing its full relaxation. Do you agree with Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg that the principle of equality was in the Constitution from the start? Why or why not? What role did the post-Civil War amendments play in helping to establish equality in the United States? What you see as the biggest struggles in ensuring equality under the law in the twenty-first century?
I have only a short time to live, only one death to die, and I will die fighting for this cause. There will be no peace in this land until slavery is done for.
The United States started a nation offering little equality for anyone inside white and under men. However, the Constitution did give away a future while under the law through the amended process.
Yet, the modern day law is a rise. The law and the process today proves to be difficult and created for professional equality.
Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, a weak and abiding Constitution, one that evolves to make current society defense. However, the Constitution is not fully embodied and spelled equality from the original Constitution. That is, interpreting the Constitution as it was originally granted to the understood. The three-fifths clause in Article One, Section Two, Clause Three, which finds enslaved individuals as only three-fifths of a person for legislative representation and taxation purposes, as well as the fugitive slave clause found in Article Four, Section Two, Clause Three, which require the return of enslaved people to their owners, clearly illustrate the Constitution's lack of equality.
Despite these shortcomings, Article Five allows Congress to oppose amendments to the Constitution, allowing for changes made to unequal equality. Former slave Frederick Douglass stated, "The American Constitution is a great national testament done by the people, and only altered by the."
Frederick Douglass, although once enslaved himself, saw the potential of the Constitution to help to achieve greater equality.
The post-Civil War amendments were crucial in establishing equality in the United States, but they have limitations, and let marginalized communities know the rule of discrimination.
The Thirteenth Amendment outlawed slavery, but Southern states passed black codes to maintain the system of segregation, which necessitated further legislation, such as the Civil Rights Act of eighteen sixty-six and the Fourteenth Amendment, which ensures equal protection under the law for all citizens.
However, even with the guarantees in the Fourteenth Amendment, marginalized communities continue to face discrimination and exclusion in the decades later, as evident by the landmark case of Brown v. Board of Education since nineteen eighty-four, which finally ended legalization of this segregation.
The Fifteenth Amendment ensured voting rights could not be denied on the basis of various of the rules set in statute. This event of this was weakened in twenty thirteen by the Supreme Court decision of Chauvin and Chauvin.
This decision struck out key provisions of the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, raising concerns about ongoing voter suppression efforts, such as jury anger and lack of sensibility.
To continue expanding equality today, it is crucial to make the amendment process easier and to use Article Five of the Constitution more frequently.
And nursing this is a slight barrier spaced by more than once, and reduce the legislative action is also essential.
Laws against discriminatory policing, redlining, and voter suppression are just some of the measures that can help ensure equal protection under the law. Additionally, efforts to amend the Constitution to better protect individual rights and establish equal protection in the government is crucial in the development of equality.
Only those state and union classes approach to the United States fully recognize the absence of equality for all.
The biggest struggle in ensuring equality under the law in the twenty-first century is the lack of consensus about what equality looks like, leading to greater polarization and red line, and ultimately, no progress being made.
While most United States citizens agree with the advocates of democracy, freedom, and equality, the pressure is achieving them very greatly between parties.
This polarization has become more prominent over time, with concern that illegal idol can be more determined in conflict in the past few years. According to Pew research, the number of moderate liberals and conservatives on Capitol Hill has changed from about one hundred sixty in nineteen ninety-one to nineteen seventy-two to only around two dozen today, further resulting in a public interest.
As a result, import legislation such as the Forward People Act of twenty twenty-one, which aimed to strengthen equality, increase government ethics standards, and limit the influence of Latin politics, failed to pass in Congress.
This lack of consensus on the importance of equal rights and the role of the federal government in ensuring fair elections highlights an imbalance of defining and acting equality in the twenty-first century.
Now, with the national competition, we uncovered up to, this year's might be eight minutes of follow-up, but however long or short you want to make it. And if you all can speak really loudly, because we're behind you, we can't really hear. So as loudly as you can, if you don't mind. Okay. So just let me go.
What questions from the panel? So you mentioned that one of the greatest struggles that we face is how we define equality. That this is one of the greatest kind of challenges we face in the country. So I'd love to hear of each of you, find it, and how you can act upon it.
I particularly find equality an opportunity. I think that everyone should be given the same chance and the same situations in order to be the best that they can be. And depending on that person, they may not fully take that opportunity. You cannot force somebody to become the best that they are, that is not in our life. However, I think that everyone needs to be given the same opportunity and the same place to start to be the best that they can be.
I would like to kind of give a different definition. I believe in quality outcome. So I believe in everybody in that people start off in different levels of equality and privilege and what's in front of them. And so I believe that based on where you are at, you should receive more or less resources in order for all to hopefully get to the same place and success.
Personally, going back to more of your opinion, this ideology, Casey was quoting saying back to folks that this district are not judged by the color of their skin or Latin content or their character. It relates to anything, whether it be race, sexual orientation, religion. I think that equality really is true to all people equally, and only based in anything based on who they are as a person and their character, not any other external or internal features that don't indicate how we should treat other people as equals.
One of the more controversial about what equality looks like in a modern society has also led us to challenges. So I think that coming to the realization, regardless of our input, is truly handling what equality looks like in what common principles in the United States of America is, make sure that we can be all equal.
Thank you.
I'll build off of that question. So what role do you believe schools play in providing an equitable experience for our students?
So if we're talking once again about equality and outcome, if you look at on the basis of living in schools, equality and outcome would be states giving the more better outcome, but say A to the districts that are struggling, to the schools that are in lower income areas, so that they can receive the same opportunities as their fellow classmates and other more higher income users.
And specifically looking at like in our own situation, we are relatively well-funded school districts and our local community has and whatnot, but within a sports and fringe here treating different types of students. I think a lot of times, schools place a lot of emphasis on helping the student or student succeed and make sure they can drive even more. However, it's also worth attention to that, our special ed populations, other students who may pass this interest that the districts might not be able to provide, or how opportunities allow them to forge and release out where they are interested in.
Whether or not we have a different activity, it's important that we highlight students' interests, whether they be what they question they're doing well, or whether they're working in the wrong. So whether it's be a demand or the football, being in a testing condition to be there. And I think that school has a wonderful job to do, because we have itself, East Asia to be, and Asia to be, and Latin to be, and American to be. And I think that even when our program, I think that this school really does try to make sure that everyone has equal opportunity to feel accepted, to feel like they are in a position of equality.
Can you please? Sure. It's good to see you. Congratulations on your successful following and success, and you seem so happy. So never in my, never in my life have I seen the convergence of so many different constitutional issues kind of coming together at the same time in the same conversation. You've seen, you've seen addition of free speech and equality, the Fourteenth Amendment, and so on and so forth. And so one of the things that's been hurting to me on all sides of the political spectrum, basically, is what has happened to the trust we have in institutions, whether they become institutions or academic institutions, and what the, how the rule of law seems to be in some, if you depend on which you watch it, which you feed, there's a sort of enrode in the complex that we have in the law. Do you see the rule of law as a sort of kind of body in framers discussions upon the Constitution? Do you see that being an impediment to equality, or do you see that as being the avenue by which we bring, we bring about full realization of equality, even if that wasn't necessarily totally manifested in the original Constitution, the amended amendments, the Voting Rights Act, the sovereign checks? Do you see the rule of law as being the theme, it's a theme or the theme that you just refer to?
I would personally see the rule of law as something that would, if anything, enables us to reach that, although currently there is a lot of polarization and whatnot in Congress, and even within the court of sentencing. The rule of law really allows for people to establish the rules of equality and follow them. And although a lot of issues regarding equality also come from people's personal beliefs, they regard sort of religion and just some different beliefs, things and whatnot, it's important that we do create legislation and move towards more equality in the laws and community. For example, even if you want to look at founders, the society was a lot different back then, and so a lot of people didn't believe in equality of races just because of the way that their society was structured. And now we've moved so far over these passages, and there's still issues that we deal with, especially regards to LGBTQ plus discrimination and equality of assets. So as we move on and progress as a nation, I really feel like the rule of law is something I can use to really help people realize that when we create these laws, it's not necessarily based on their own personal opinion, but just to kind of create a bit of equality for all of us at the same time.
So to define rule of law versus to the idea that the people making the law, like you said, are more important, be present, be in a position of power, is they also have to follow the law in that sense. So when you talk about the distrust in institutions, you see that throughout our time, because we saw that during the Great Depression, when people were unemployed and just looking for work, and they were facing these words, they're facing, just being unemployed. We saw this during the industrialization in our country. So when we look to today, when we are mistrusted in the press, when we're mistrusted because of the legislative, we need to remember that we do have a baseline of the rule of law. And so as long as the legislature starts striving to retranspare, we can trust this fundamental act of justice.
To corroborate my colleagues, rule of laws are important, just trusting our government and binding by these rules as they are, they should serve the people. But as you mentioned, there has been the distrust of these societal institutions, whether it be the industrial prison complex, or there be some of the problems that we have with leasing and different places, or people have turned to sort of holding each other accountable. And although on a larger scale, that impacts members, sometimes it can be important for you to be accountable, and sort of that's some of the stuff.
So I just keep saying, there's something, thank you all, because I'm so blown away. And you're a magnificent teacher. Thank you so much. I just love seeing you four strong women sitting here and speaking so intelligently. I love how you greet us all by the language that is either native for you or that you're studying. I just, I'm just so impressed. My question for you all is, in this topic, how can you think of, I'm going to take you out, extract you out of your role and meaning people, and think about you in your day at the high school and amongst your peers. How, how have you used your thoughts and your knowledge on an issue like this amongst classmates, or amongst different groups, or things that you see at school, just in your day as, you know, juniors or sophomores, or whatever, you know, whatever grade you may be? And how, how, how does this apply to your, your day in school? How, how, how does this apply to your, your day in school, this topic?
When we're looking at our custom people, we learn so much. We learn how to be respectful and humane. We learn how to pick ourselves out of our own positions and sort of look at it from another side. And so when looking at this, yes, there are so many definitions for equality. I might have a different definition from my peers. However, we need to take the knowledge that we gain and the respect that we gain and use that in order to have the fact that we are all equal and that we treat our peers as equals among us. And so when we discuss with them, we may not have the same idea, but we can still be respectful and compassionate.
So through this class, I have really seen my political standing shift more to moderate. And it's because of this opportunity to see different perspectives, but be in a space in which that is expected and respected. And so when we talk about civil discourse and the decline of civil discourse in our society today, this class and classes like this have been able to build up by personal and I've seen my classmates' ability to discuss in a way that acknowledges each other's viewpoints and perspectives and kind of come to a compromise on things to be agreed on or the ability to disagree. I've seen that been lost in some of my other fellow classmates, but this course has really helped me to kind of use that when I'm not speaking to someone who's in the room.
One of the more, in addition to this, I'm also being more aware of my own civic virtue as a citizen and to exercise that full civic ability, whether it's very certain to vote, especially in China, or participating in the ability having this, whether I'm talking about form possibly leaving that constitution or ideas or things, or whether I'm long-term, I'm able to be more and really exercising my civic virtue on multiple fronts.
And for me personally, one thing I really truly realized through this class was that when anyone has their opinion, it obviously comes from somewhere, whether it's that either of like family values, their own like experience. And so ensuring that we really value other people's opinions, even if we try to open our mouths and are so shocked by what they have to say, it obviously comes from somewhere. And so having the opportunity to have these conversations, kind of dismantle the walls and realize, oh, there's some person that I'm sitting across from, I wonder what their like experience is, how that has impacted their views and whatnot. And then adding on to all my other colleagues have said, just the opportunity for us to come together and share these ideas. A lot of, unfortunately, a lot of people living in our country don't really know much about the Constitution or their rights even. And just having that opportunity to learn about that and just become better and welcome citizens is very cool just to get that knowledge.
Just about cheer for you before.
I have a question, but before I ask, we'll get over to Stan. Thank you. A number of questions have been going through my head, but I had one that I'm going to ask was, you all think so quickly on your feet. It's very impressive to come up with crisp and concise answers like this, so proposed. How do you prepare to do that? Is that just something that's innate in all of you or there are exercises or the things that you do? Because I'm sure that that's a big part of the competition, even in state or DC. It's an impressive skill set, so I'm applauding you. I'm curious as to what that looks like in the deep old room at the high school.
As you might have noticed, we all have hand signals actually. In order to tell when we want to speak, we put our hand out and that signals I have some information that I have to share. I know what I'm going to say. I do not speak. And we also, it's absolutely, this class has absolutely helped us to think about. If you saw us, districts should be shocked at the amount of work we had. We stumbled on our words, not answering questions because we had no idea what the judges were asking us. This class is truly amazing and the fact that they teach you so much in such a little amount of time. Our teacher, amazing teacher Wolfing, has taught us so much and she's so great at teaching us what exactly we need to know to succeed in life, past this class, in college, these skills that we learned today in our class. They're not only in this class. You can use these, like how to vote, how to have possession. You can use them in your life forever.
I would say personally, when it comes to like when you wander on your feet while waiting on an else's debate, just you should debate and for like debate, especially when you have to really like know things on top of your head, completely defend your opinion. And honestly, I just feel like more than that, just like speaking from your heart, because obviously you're going to have all this information that you know, that you've memorized, all these facts, all these quirks that you can pull out of your back pocket because you know those so well. But also just like speaking from your heart and being truly ready, that also really helps a lot of people. Because if you're being honest and you're sharing everything, that really is not that hard to do if you're being honest.
One of the more, this is security that comes with it, that security pairing and types of stuff. And we really did a good job with that in our class. So we said we were just, we were just about memorizing all that information easily. And that it was to that security that comes with, or even more of this.
I'm kind of building off of what I always was saying about, oh, kind of, oh, what we used and what Stan also said. We have these ideas as we're living in the country, as these are practical things to apply to every day. We're able to come up with these things that we're saying pretty quickly because we already have established, you know, we already have established experience with the topic we're talking about. So that's definitely helped. And then we've gone off and then we've listened about facts and history and socials and our opinion and those are the topic.
Separations and preparations, they say. Well, proud of the applause. Julia, you won so bad on behalf of all of your teammates, Mr. Wolfing. We're so proud of you. This is incredible and we wish you luck. We know that you'll be most proud of faculty DC. Really appreciate you coming and demonstrating this for us. Good luck. That will take us to Agenda I of 5.02, which is the middle school web presentation. We've got some coordinators and student leaders here to provide the presentation. Any questions for the board? And also Steve Madison from the crowd. Welcome. And if you have a question, hold down if you want to say something. Shakaasty.
All right, good afternoon. I appreciate being here. Sean Kastie from Southern Trail. And we have with us our web leaders representing, there's nine, five web coordinators who are staffed at our school. We're able to be here, but again, this is one of our programs we're very proud of at the middle school that helps with the transition from fifth grade to sixth grade, as well as give a leadership opportunity for students in eighth grade. Looking at a wide mix of students who are all there to probably support for a wide mix of large students coming in. And hopefully in previous weeks, you've seen leaders emerge from elementary school and at the middle school. And there are these amazing leaders that we just heard from at the high school. Our web program has been, we're very proud of and want to pass over and get an opportunity to hear from each of them. They have a prepared statement for you and then they'll be able to answer and ask questions at the end. All right. Yeah, you can definitely break that down.
Hi, my name is C.C. I'm a web leader at Centra. As a web leader, we have a responsibility to be known as six graders about upcoming events and opportunities here at S&amp;S. However, that's not the main point of web. The point of web is to make sure that everyone knows they belong, is the name, or everyone belongs. We aim to be someone they can talk to and want to ask questions and we need answers. We want the six graders to know that they belong.
Hi, my name is Anne Murray and I am a web leader. Being a web leader means that we need to be outgoing and not afraid to come up and talk to people. It also means that we have to be responsible role models for the six graders. Being a leader means that we have to be able to keep things in line. This can mean anything from playing game with the six graders during orientation to giving them a guiding tool around the school. It's very important for us to be prepared for questions they might ask and what actions they might take, knowing the expectations and how they should be put into practice in all other locations. Web gives you the opportunity to learn how to be a leader, which is a skill you can learn at high school for presentations or group projects. And of course, we own that and will definitely be useful at whatever job we end up with. Web is a really good way to introduce us into relationship.
Hello, my name is Robbie and I'm a web leader at the University of Kentucky. Most students face something unknown to many students, which we would say diversity. Here at Web, it's our job to make sure that many students from different backgrounds feel represented and safe. Our web teams try to make up a one female and one male student. While our ratio of men and women is by far different, we try to keep it for standards. However, in these groups, we also try to include many students of a variety of races. Say from Web, we have four members representing us, two of which are from Indian background, two of which are from American background. We try to keep our students integrated, proof that our skill is what defines our team, that will keeps us together and around us. We hope that our six graders can measure this diversity of levels on by the depth of mission.
My name is Sarah Trenn, a web leader from Southern Trailers. Web was created as a program to help six graders transition easily from elementary to middle school. Unfortunately, during the COVID pandemic, our web group was faced with a challenge of COVID pandemic, which would be really hard for us to experience some of the things that Web has to offer that are helpful to our six graders. Things like organization and the monthly meetings and our help. In addition to that, the only way I could reach out to my web leader was through email, making it really horrific to me to communicate effectively. That is why I resonate to the feelings of those six graders who don't know how to navigate and navigate environment. So when I became a web leader, I made more of an effort to reach out to my web kids in person and help them anywhere they're happy. That is what every eighth grader in this program is doing, helping, teaching and inspiring our six graders. We want to make the transition from elementary to middle school as smooth and as positive as possible. A part of that is having web meetings, web review meetings every month. So so you could get events for our six graders. In the past, this was really difficult due to the limited time we have in the school base. That is why as of this year, we are creating a web stretch class, giving our leaders more than enough time to have new things, come up with ideas, build up our six graders, grow their skill set that might help them in the future for the school and high school. We want Web to be a place not just for six graders, but a place for the leaders to experience leadership skills, see diversity and lead an impact on our future web leaders.
Yeah, these are fantastic eighth graders. And what I want to say on behalf of Southern Trail and Mapleview, because it's part of both schools, is thank you board for your support. The extra stipends that goes to the teachers, you know, we've been able to add on to that. The time, be able to provide resources and send them to training is part of our extra levy dollars that I think is really important and we wouldn't have without those local levy dollars. And we appreciate your support and half and see for programs like this that not only build leaders, but also welcome students in and help them take their first steps in middle school and be successful. So thank you guys very much and wondering if you have any questions for our web leaders?
I'll call my own question, own big question first. So you're all eighth graders, correct? So who's letting you go up to high school next year, right? Are you, are you sort of chanting, do you have the option that the, you said, to channel some of that nervousness? My daughter's going to high school for students, so she's, she's feeling many of the things that you're trying to help. So thank you for that. So I think one of the things that, one of the best parts of this job is not when we see adults get up and need help to help students and support students. It's when I need to see the students being, you know, supporting the other students. That is the absolute best that we can see, or at least I can. Thank you for that. So is there, is there anything that you see kind of be occurring? Now the question, is there anything you see kind of be occurring as that transition happens? Is that you think would be important to us?
I feel like the fact that we're also helping students come into the school and we're also promoting between the school and how to connect with them. Like one of the things that I really worry about right now is like we're all high classes are very limited. And I can know that like my sixth graders are going to be having this feeling. So when I have meetings with them, I can like ask them, like, do you guys need help like a tour around the school? Or helping with your schedules, lunch and all that stuff. So I feel like having us go into like this school and then also moving to the school helps us have this connection where I kind of know what they need help with, so I can help them.
So as we transitioned from elementary school to middle school, we were scared. We didn't know where classes would be, but of course we had COVID, so it was all on the way. However, our students now are now coming in from a physical school to non-physical middle school. So they most likely have the same fear as Simon said from getting from class to class. And another big part of the hallway in our school, they always take a ramp and they get shoved by bigger eighth graders, first sixth graders. So knowing that I might have the same fear when I transition to high school will make me feel that I know what sixth graders are feeling. So I would know, oh, this is why I should be afraid to overcome the fear that I would feel in high school. So knowing that I see what I see now will help me have confidence in high school. That's why I feel that this experience will save you.
I think they say, I think their bear crew kind of helps out the bankers, they come in. It's a big day on Wednesday. It's the future freshman room. Yeah, so I don't say if you want to speak to that at all.
Yeah, we have future freshmen, we have, so we have a, our bear crew, which is essentially our high school version of web leaders. They are upperclassmen and I think actually sophomores as well, I should say that. So it's 10, 11 and 12 graders who help guide the incoming freshmen with the school. They help orientate, orienting them with the, where their classes are, where the gym is, where the cafeteria is, just getting the flow with the inner workings of the school. It's very similar to what you guys are doing and I would not be surprised to see you guys do that in the future. In fact, I want to see that.
Thank you so much for that. This is excellent, so informative. Mr. Kastie, my question's actually for you. From your position, or actually look at that, how, how many years have we had the web program?
Since 2017. It was part of our new transition to the new high school and new middle schools. We really focused on that transition.
Okay, and you worked at school at Southern Trail right then and prior to that, were you there?
Correct.
Okay, so my question would be, I asked from your seat, what is the main difference you see having, having had, having had a time when new fifth graders were coming in to become sixth graders and not having passed anything like that and now having the program in place?
Yeah, so much of it, when there was a taller middle school, St. River Middle School in 15, 16 that I observed were adult one. And there is an opportunity, I think, to help as we looked at having six, seven, eight middle schools to really provide leadership opportunities for our eighth graders as well as start the process of sixth graders experiencing this is what it's like to be an eighth grader. And their great role models is the first impression of our sixth grader coming in is I want to be like these kids. And so we really try to select a wide diverse group of students who have the characteristics we're looking for in terms of being not necessarily always the most academic or not necessarily always having the best behavior, but really being something that focuses on kind of the team first attitude, that idea of having the school and that be a servant leader. One of the things that we've done is we've just tried to grow the program. And so we saw a big influx when our first group of sixth graders became eighth graders. And fortunately, like during Slayton's year, when he was an eighth grader, that was during COVID. And so it was hard and kind of had a fallback. So this was, it's kind of a rebirth. We talked about a reset. And so we have some more, more coordinators and we also have more leaders. I think there's currently about 70 plus, 70, 80. And so it's a lot of, about 365 eighth graders is quite a few that are acting as leaders, at least in this way, as well as in leadership classes and sports and other things. You're welcome. Thank you guys so much. Really appreciate the opportunity to then share the web group at Southern Trail. Thank you for your time.
If your folks are interested in the intro before that, I'd love it.
That'd be great. Why don't you guys come up here and kind of get a picture taken? Yes, it's such a pretty. Fantastic. So we'll introduce you to the board with help. So we'll introduce you to the board with help. Can you get in front a little bit? I'd like to know if you're all on this, guys. You can stay at the apartment. There you go, there you go. There we go. Slayton.
Thank you.
I don't know what we got coming on, guys.
Yes, thank you.
How did this one sound? We're a hot mess, so. Any parents are loving it.
Paraphrased, I'm gonna like.
That brings us to Agenda 5.03, which is an action item to approve resolution 2023-02's surplus technology. And all right, technology supplies and sure that they can also provide the, and some questions for us. But first, I would please have a motion to approve Agenda 5.03, Resolution 2023-02 Surplus Technology.
Sure, I'm moved to approve Agenda 5.03, Constitution 2023-02 Surplus Technology.
Zach, good, Trevor. Hi, welcome.
Well, thank you for coming up for us. So this is our somewhat quarterly surplus of technology that has ended its useful life within the district. And this is somewhat of a unique surplus situation where items that we are surplusing have essentially zero value. Normally this would go out to a state surplus auction where they charge us for shipment fees, freight fees to ship the items and then go through the auction process. But no guarantee of return on any of that, that money back to us because of a minimum requirement the state does for auctions. And on how they pay back to their, to the districts that are supplying the items. So we have partnered with a third party company that goes through validated destruction as well as are certified for safe recycling of electronic components. And they agreed to surplus this electronic equipment for us in the district, which get no guarantee paid out to us in these particular instances because of the type of devices that are being surplus. Although they function, they have little to no value in the industry or in other districts. Questions?
Because I really love recycling. Can you, what are, what's an example, like how would they, how would they recycle items? And items that have no fabric or amount of metal. So how would they recycle parts that are unused?
So with laptops in general, they're typically broken apart into the plastics. They separate the plastics from the motherboards and various other components. I don't know how this company does it specifically, but the general technology is they grind it all up and then they feed it through equipment, which separates by different densities. So they can extract the gold, the plastics, the ceramics, the various items, separate them and ship them out to factories or sources that can be used, but not from that reuse.
Just for like clarification, what are examples of this technology that we're not using? Is it old projectors, you know, old technology that's completely outdated? What is this model like?
Absolutely, yeah. In this particular case, it is almost, it's 90, 80% Chromebooks, but there is a list that's provided here. But the Chromebooks in question here are. This was the surplus one, yeah. There should be over a thousand items on here. The Chromebooks in the case here are out of support by Google, which by our standards and other state standards, in Washington State, you're not qualified for any type of state certified testing. So they cannot be used by any district in the state to do standardized testing. And by that fact, you cannot use with the students in a general fashion.
Okay, thank you.
In the cases of other surplus where we, where we do have Windows devices, we kind of move away from Windows devices for the students as a district. And as such, there's much less aftermarket value to them.
Question on data privacy. Do we, do we wipe those internally before they go to recycle? Is it recycled again? Do we need also sort of affidavit or something of certificate of destruction?
Absolutely. On the case of Chromebooks, there's no local data stored on them. We do go through a process of removing them from our management, so they're no longer carrying any data of ours. For Windows devices, we do a very basic wipe before we send them out. This company in particular does supply a certificate of data destruction upon completion of their process back with their secure warehouse. A little bit of foreshadowing, but this relative to the next thing on the agenda. How do we differentiate between those two things? Are we running these right to the end of life, zero value, and other assets were not? Pulling up at some point, making a decision to, we can still recycle these. How do we differentiate between those two things? Is there a point where we decide we're going to move on from one and go all the way to the end of life, or how does that work? Absolutely, it's a, it's a very tough question to, to kind of plan out. The answer is, from a district standpoint, surplus versus recycle. Surplus does still function. It is a working component that can theoretically be powered on and used in some capacity. Recycle is an item that is completely broken, dismantled during a state that is not usable by any Web. So those are the, the black and white differentiators. When it comes down to the usability of something from the district, that's where it comes into more of a question. For Chromebooks, they have a very distinct lifetime set by the manufacturer, by Google in this case. So we take that timeline and follow it through to the end and recycle those down. So the higher devices go into circulation with new students. They use them as far as they can, and we cycle those down into the lower grades that have less need for higher capacity and then break the lower devices into newer students. The Chromebooks are very economical, albeit time limited technology. They're very economical and supportable for the day-to-day operation of the district. All right, well, I'll, I'll go to the coffee table on the table.
Hi.
All right, the motion passes four to zero. And Trevor's going to speak with us for, I have a number 5.04, which is another action item to approve Resolution 2023-03 Recycle Technology. And please have a motion to approve Agenda 5.03, Resolution 2023-03 Recycle Technology.
Sure, I'm moved to, I'm moved to approve Agenda 5.04, actually to approve Resolution 2023-03 Recycle.
A second.
So along the same lines of the surplus, this is our somewhat quarterly recycle of equipment. These are parts and components that we have collected throughout the last three or four months that have been from screen replacements for broken devices, batteries that have come to an end of useful cycle, projectors that have for whatever reason failed, are deployed or changing out of projectors to newer technology. So these are items that pile up in our department. We don't have a really viable, secure place to store these items. So trying to keep this cycle of about every quarter to have things removed. In part, we're in the same company that handles our surplus, they're able to pick them all up and then charge. So in most cases, these recycling items don't have a key for our school districts if we're to recycle locally. But typically, they're always a freight or service fee involved taking those up depending on the amount of equipment. So part of the one company to do the whole group allotment does save us kind of money in freight and materials for packing. Questions? Coffee table favor.
Hi.
All right, the motion passes four to one. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Absolutely, thank you. That takes us to Agenda 5.05, which is our Teaching and Learning Care is Updated. And Executive Director of Teaching and Learning Donna Weekly, Assistant Director of Learning and Enduring, looking forward to present to us, goes updated into question for the board.
We have a gift package. Yeah, we're going to jazz, we're going to do some teaching and learning tonight. Well, hi.
Hi.
We're excited to be here tonight to talk about the Teaching and Learning Department and the work that we have been up to this year, how they do work with our team, and do a little work together. So we thought we'd start with our co-responsibility, our leaders in our meeting. You guys have seen these before. But what I wanted to start with, this was around leading who we are. And the one that stands out to me, it's different with other leaderships, but the one that really has been standing out to me is certain leaderships. And when I think of our department, and when I talk about this department, I talk about a lot of people who are certain leaders. So it was recently flying through, on family vacation, and we were doing the labor. And as Midwest students do, we got talking with a fellow professor at the date. And he was asking about, and I actually started just talking about the people that don't, and I, and they are certain leaders who are here. They are taught to be every corner of this district. Some are at an employee working and purchasing and receiving materials. Others, building coaches are spread out in every building, supporting teachers. We have those who work remotely, over the past, bringing us with our data systems. And we have people in central office. And we're all working collaboratively to serve students, serve teachers, serve our staff well, and working on our vision and our, our system, our work with, with Google. And we're excited to highlight that tonight. So wanted to just at a glance, highlight some of the work we're doing in the department. So you can see their stated achievements, certainly OSBI reporting, federal programming, capacity building with our staff. One of our big initiatives that you have been hearing about, PLC Plus this year, collaborating with leaders, supporting our new teachers through our best program. Thinking about, of course, pathways, we had an opportunity a week ago, two weeks and a half ago, to really be thinking about where we're going as a system and what we're wanting, what our community is wanting for our JH100 Cafe. And we'll have more opportunities to learn from experts in the field as we continue to think about our programs and our pathways. Of course, full improvement is part of our work as we think about site plans, student growth, recovery learning, science school. That all is part of the core work that we do. And then, not to be forgotten, of course, is instructional technology, is in teaching and learning, thinking about our technology brand, how that comes to life in our buildings, and helps to move forward for our students. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Donna.
We get to tag team. A couple of pieces that we wanted to highlight for you connected to our high expectations. We know one of our key ideas connected to really bringing that alive is we have a direct action. And we're trying to work at it, and you will notice it's got a lot of pieces to it. Michael's probably heard way more about this, but he never thought he would. But as we think about all of the different components, we've been doing a lot of thought. And in fact, we have a meeting tomorrow. We've been doing some data collection, connected to a survey with our teachers, and really trying to understand where basements that we're at, and our leaders, and our coaches, and everybody. And we actually have work tomorrow afternoon that will call us at the system level to be looking at an initial look at that. And that's in partnership with our intern teams. So Tracy and Scott will be part of that, as will Ally back here. And so when we think about the work of the department, one of the pieces is it's not just limited, obviously, to what's happening in, in our department. But as we think about high expectations and we think about what we're trying to actually impact for students, this is coming to life through the great work of our building leaders and coaches and teachers every single Friday. And it really is at the heart of what we're starting to look at and to work on. So we're excited to take a peek at some of the data. We included a couple little pieces of that in, that we think are particularly important from our vantage point, thinking about the whole system. And we'll get that from the leaders tomorrow and begin to try to kind of characterize what we think we're learning. Some work as we think about that journey. These are some pictures from kickoff last August as we think about that. And you'll notice lots of pictures of amazing leaders all across, strictly the city of Orange, Oklahoma. So super excited about that. Some of the key partnerships that we have, and I know that Lindsay also is going to speak to this one, is really connected to all of our different teams. But we are going to highlight an important one next, and actually let Lindsay add a few pieces connected to this.
So, one second. So we might have highlighted one team in particular because the PLC Plus work really couldn't come to life without our incredible partnership with our labor union. And we are really blessed in teaching and learning that we get to work with Martina, Ally, and Renee on a regular basis as part of our feedback loop around what is happening, what we're carrying in the buildings, and how we support and make the experience for staff more meaningful and authentic to the work that they're doing for students in the classroom. And so these folks give up their time, they talk with us, they really look forward to the meeting every single one with them because it helps us support our team and make sure that what we're focused on is what actually needs to be, you know, focused on at the building level, where the, where this happens with the students.
And most of the time, they're not coming with, they're very gracious in helping to always, if there's things that are helping, but typically, they're coming with places where people are praying and trying to service what's not helping as well as we like to. And the piece that is, and touches our heart, which is why we look forward to it, is it's a positive moment where we're all trying to work collaboratively together to try to figure things out and maybe transition through it. So super grateful for that.
Okay, guys, we continue here. One of the other pieces that we really focus on teaching and learning is curriculum assessment and instruction, right? And we again are thinking about our direction for guaranteed viable curriculums across our system. We have some work that's ongoing for us. Maybe you've had a chance to look at these, and there are more pieces for you to look at in our department plan. We're going to give an opportunity to highlight some of the work that is happening even in these areas. And one, I mean, area where we are thinking about is how are we understanding our community and what they are hoping for from a sports area and social area for those? And so we hosted the JH100 Cafe a week ago. And out of that came some skills and mindsets that families are hoping to see from their students at elementary, middle, and high school. And what does it mean to be middle school ready for our big creators, and for our middle schoolers to be high school ready, and for our high schoolers to be ready to take on whatever challenge may be in front of them. So we have that. And that really is already starting to inform some of the work that we're doing as we think about curriculum adoptions going forward. As we have been talking with our team, we have been looking at what came out of really that first part that we knew so far. And that really is those essential skills and mindset. And so we have those hurdles there. And I want to give you a moment to just kind of look for a second at what came out of that. So, super fascinating to think about touch, like, where are we intentionally teaching to some of these things? One thing that I said at evening is, these things don't happen by accident, they happen because we make intentional decisions as a system to create experiences for kids that help build these skills and mindsets in our learners. And, so we're gonna engage in activity tonight, because this is teaching and learning, so we're gonna do some learning together, because we're all learners always, and we really do believe that in our hearts that we never stop learning, that we are lifelong learners. So we are gonna engage in a math activity, a little game tonight, a little competition, if you will. And so the competition is this, you and a partner, so I think Dawn has handed these out strategically.
Yes.
So, you and a partner are going to engage in a math game, and this math game is part of our new math curriculum, the illustrative curriculum, that will be fully implemented across our system next year. So this math game is called Help Looks, and here's how you play. You and your partner are each going to take six cards. You are going to choose four cards from your six, and then you are going to make a multiplication expression. It could be three, three to five times one, or two times two. You with me so far, all my audience members? Okay. You are going to try to get as close as you can to 3,000. And then you're going to jot it down on your scorecard. What you will do is, you will then try to, you then need to calculate the difference between what you have as your number and 3,000, and that's your score. Those four wins is what I call, okay? You can go over, so you can, you know, count, so an example here, right, to go visual here. So, here's player one, they chose 502 times six, they got 3,012. The difference between 3,000 and 3,012 is 12, they got 12 on their scorecard. Player two, 497 times six, 2,902, difference of 18, so little scores. Where hopefully, play one round, 82, I will win the win. Yeah, questions? Can I be the P?
Oh, Michael, you just got this.
Do you want, do you want, oh, I'll take, I'll take a better one. I can tell you, yes, it's a question, she's not your partner, you can guess it here. Okay. And your neighbor, your neighbor, Echo Parker, all right.
Four cards.
There you go.
Four cards on me. There you go. Your neighbor pick, your neighbor four cards.
Choose your card to take.
No, no, it's the top four.
Choose your card to take. Choose your card to take. Yeah. Choose their rent. All right, there you go. Choose their rent. We got some kids here, choose your card to take.
Why don't we, why don't we, six, three, four?
I want you to choose some of us.
Okay, just pick four, red, red.
Okay, now, as soon as you get done with one piece, you can go again.
What'd you get?
She's, she's perfect. Yep. This floor is four.
Where's our team?
Six hundred and seven, five.
Do we have a way, or do we want to, we don't say, now, we don't, now, we don't.
No, but we need to, to be known by between the two of you, like, if you don't calculate the difference, how we know the look? Because after all, we need to, we need to play that. Part these three, fast. Bad direction, I think, is team activity, you don't, so, it's competition. I'm very good at giving bad directions, this is competition. You are trying to have the lower score compared to your partner. Lower score, you're slanting.
Remember difference between, difference between, your number is 3,000, you're looking for the bottom.
Want to be as close to 3,000 as you can.
Lower than him.
If he's closer to 3,000. Okay, then, you're gonna have to pick that here. All right, try to navigate around here, we'll give you about 20 seconds to finish your math. You already jumped into the round two.
I was gonna treat you like an expert.
All right, Tracy Brown, you got a W.
Well, back here. I'm gonna put myself back here.
All right, you can bring your game to a close. All right. You're in the middle. I know. We had a scene probably did this with our elementary principals recently, so I wanna, as you think back on the essential skills and mindsets that families and community members highlighted, and you think about the activity you just engaged with, what stood out to you from here, that your building, or that students would be building, by engaging this activity, yes, please?
I definitely am curious, I think, because it encourages you to look at it many different ways, encourages you to create some problem with your, you know.
Yeah, we're like curious people, yes, absolutely. What else?
We were not at the, you were not average. I was gonna say, hey, man, she wasn't on my team, I have, no, there's no.
What other things stood out to you?
I wish, I wish we could, I wish we had the time, I wish we had the time to go through more of those, because I think that was kind of part of the exercise, is you see yourself maybe starting off, maybe like, ah, way off, and then you get a, like, a flow to it, and kind of that idea of, with, like, just trying to, and trying to, I mean, I wish I, I guess that would've, that would've happened, so, but I would've discovered.
Yeah, perseverance, right? Absolutely. And one thing I want to highlight, is this how close shows up again and again throughout the K5 experience, so you can see, we actually did Level 6 tonight, but it starts with addition, and then our fifth graders are doing a similar game with fractions. And so, it just continues to build as students progress through our system, and challenge to think in newly creative ways. And, this is again, part of the work of our team. These centers were quite the construction project for our teaching and learning team. Three months of time. Much collaboration, and actually, access to an amazing vendor here in Maple Valley, who helped us to actually accomplish the printing, connected to this, and then, over break, and well into, because our goal was to get these out into classrooms before the end of January, and our team including that, that target. And for our soft start with the curriculum, we have students playing, there's a whole bunch of different games, math, math games, that are connected to the center activities that our teachers are really learning about, as they do the kickoff to the curriculum for our whole system next week on Monday, with added services. And with that, I would just add that, we're now going through an adoption process, excuse me, process for our middle level math, and this is helping to inform what's happened at elementary, what happened at Toma 100 Cafe, is helping to inform the process for middle level, and how do we think stepically, what does the through line look for us as we build curious, capable, competent mathematicians, K-12, and ready to take on the challenges that may be in our system, whatever it's going to be. And so, the other thing we want to talk about is a little.
Really sorry, you're wrong, I just gave you attention, yeah, you're right, okay, off you go.
Okay. So, a couple of other things that we'll highlight for you, in addition to just a little picture here, oh, and just before I leave it, that's only, each color is one rainbow, so, there's a lot, yeah, that's just a tiny little voice, thank you guys. The other piece that we think about, as we think about what we experienced last week at the cafe, and we started to really listen to those experiences that our community, our families, our staff, going along for our students, a piece of that is really thinking about authentic, real world places where learning happens. And Mike and Tracy are two that have lived this in their teacher time, about as close as anybody in our system connected to the work that they really put in there in developing our academy, but it's also places that we have core bodies connected to the field experiences that we do with students, and we know that that's a really key, amazing place, that we need to continue to really invest in, because these pay off in a really big ways for our students. And as you think about those bottom pieces, where we really highlighted some core things, we don't go on museum field trips, we don't go on, it's something that we don't go to museums for field experiences, but we don't go to just go and look at stuff, we go to engage our learners with what they're learning about, and we need that experience to tie into what happens before they go on that field experience, and be what really anchors learning as they come back from those field experiences, so it's more than just a trip. We do those, we really prioritize cross-curricular experiences for students, trying to bring learning together in some of the ways that we've heard a little bit about, that's certainly a place where we can stand and continue to grow our experiences for our students. We invested in just one of these experiences unexpectedly, just last week, some teaching and learning, as we think about what's really happening for our students, as we think about an opportunity that our high school, they have had fairly unexpectedly, connected to some equity work that was happening, they had an opportunity to actually perform, and performance, when you think about performing arts in front of an authentic, real audience, is a key part connected to the learning that happens there. You know, AJ, play for just a second, so you get a little glimpse, this is a. Just a brief little moment, just trying to say, while we can help to, while we.
That was everywhere.
Very sweet. While we get the chance to help to support and invest in it, it really, imagine what happens, was what's happens with our teachers, with our students in the classroom, whether that's kindergarten, all the way to fifth graders, doing math games, that you got a tiny little glimpse in, or it's the work connected to, in that hole, with an unexpected opportunity to go out last week and really perform at a, you know, at a pretty high-profile event with some amazing musicians from our high school, or as you think about the work and the steps that we're taking upcoming for the next big event for us, which is gonna be on April 17, from eight to 11, we're really trying to step back and ask ourselves, as we think about this incredible growth that we are about to really wrestle with as a system, and adding the big number of students that we have, with that is gonna come some possible opportunity for us to really think about, what are the programs that we don't yet have for our students in the way that we need to. And there's some ideas about that, we're bringing together some experts from business and industry and higher education, community businesses, our partners at River, our TC, some folks who can actually help us to step back and take a look, again, we have some ideas that we want their expertise and we would to help us to think forward to the future. And so that's not only our local community, that we had such an amazing event with, an opportunity with last week, but also kind of a little, tiny bit broader, and make sure we're taking advantage of all this, so we could, could break this down, let's say. So that, at the heart, there's a tiny little glimpse into the work that we are just incredibly proud to be able to lead, that's not about us, it's about all the amazing people that are part of our team.
Dawn, you go back to the three word class.
Yeah.
I just think it's, I appreciate you guys putting that up, putting the activity in front of everybody, because most people of our genre haven't had an experience of nested objectives and using content as a vehicle to teach other things, and, and so, the idea of, you know, adapts. And as we were sitting there in the Southern Trail Middle School, and folks, parents, community members are, are entering in, and we want to make sure our kids are able to adapt, what does that look like, to do that in a school, in a classroom setting, and, you know, teachers working with the kids and talking what, what adaptation is, and how it works, and a cycle, and what it might look like, and a series of steps as well, and then, using this content, like the example we did, would be an easy one. And then, the reflection period afterwards is, there's math there to talk about, but there's also about the process that the student went through, and it's applicable outside of math, so, just really trying to label that, and we're gonna mention, you guys did a lot of connecting posts, so, thank you.
I just have a quick question, towards the A letter presentation, you had a slide up that was TNL and TEA partnerships, and, yeah, thank you. So my question is this, for me, kind of on the other side of things, you gave the example, Dawn, you, you were talking a little bit about how these three gals, that their roles truly has surfaced information from our teachers, and our teacher voice, and our teachers' voices, and people working in our schools with our kids, and I just was wondering, you put, what was good with that, and talked to us a little bit about, how does something like Ally, how does she, how does she hear teacher voices, and what are some ways in which she gets that information and how do you have?
At least one that I can definitely speak to, because our meetings are pretty strategically set, there is a process, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ally Brett Council, so, where representatives from the different schools, right, come together, they have periodic meetings as TEA union members, where they get to listen to, I'm sure there's some good things that happen there, but a lot of times, I think there's, it's the place where people have struggles or challenges, they get authentic voice with, with their union folks. And so, a number of years ago, it's definitely a place where Scott was a really early one, and I think was partly involved in creating structure back when he was a TEA president and TNL rep, he was.
So my question is this for me, kind of on the other side of things. You gave the example, Darby, you were talking a little bit about how these three gals, their roles truly kind of surface information from our teachers and our teacher voice and our teachers' voices and people working in our schools with our kids. And I just was wondering if you could, well, it was a little bit that and talk to us a little bit about how does something like Ally, how does she, how does she hear teacher voice and what are some ways in which she gets that information and that feedback?
At least one that I can definitely speak to because our meetings are pretty strategically set. There is a process, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ally Brett Council. So where representatives from the different schools, right, come together, they have periodic meetings as TEA union members where they get to listen to, I'm sure there's some good things that happen there, but a lot of times I think there's, it's the place where people have struggles or challenges, they get authentic voice with their union folks. And so a number of years ago, it's definitely a place where Scott was a really early one and I think was partly involved in creating the structure back when he was TEA president and TNL rep. He was, that was a long time ago. Scott and I started the structure. One of Mike Marian's, he's really, really smart, who was as superintendent in that moment with that negotiation. We created the structure for a TNL-TEA union partnership. And Scott and I started that. And I think it was, it was really helpful because we didn't have any great feedback loops. Things would come to labor management as issues and problems at a level where we could have, if we were able to just understand what the issues and concerns were, we can, we resolved so many of them. And reality is, together as we have the conversation, our solutions are so much better because we're able to actually kind of wrestle and talk through what's the perspective that they were hearing at Rep Council, what's, what's the, is my perspective, what could be imagined actually working? And we spend an hour every month brainstorming basically and try to kind of think through issues and problems, hopefully before they ever even get to, and hopefully they never get to this room with Mike and Tracy and Scott.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This has been very informative. I love the exercise and the insight that was in that.
You will be able to just leave your cards there. Okay, you're about, wait a minute.
I love that.
But do you not think that you get to take them home?
All your. All for our students, you bet. Thank you, thank you again. Now that brings us to agenda item 5.06, which is an action item to approve our 2024-25 school year calendar and to redirect your pupil resources. Got the show, just making sure you're podium. And your motion to approve agenda item 5.06 or 2024-25 school year calendar. I need to be approved, agenda 5.06, passing to approve 2024-25.
Okay, I said it.
Seconded? Let's go. Hi, what do you got for us? Well, I can give you the quick breakdown of just kind of the general gist of the parts of the calendar. The first issue will be August 28th. You did build in a workshop day at this time for October 11th. There is a two-week break in December for winter. Semester break day is January 27th. Mid-winter break is the week of President's Day holiday in February. We have a weather day on March 21st and a workshop day on March 24th. Spring break during the usual week. Another weather day that day on Memorial Day, we got that Friday before, May 23rd. And the last day of school will be June 18th. And I do remind everybody, this is the 2024-25 calendar. The 23-24 calendar was already built on the duties a couple years ago. Very good. Just a comment, can you assure me because apparently my wife and I all make true friends, that I have something to say about the district calendars, so can you assure everyone listening that I do not? It's been a rest state as it evolves. I just like something on the back. The school calendar recommendation is brought together, all the associations are brought together. It's task, TEA, PSE, whom we are bargaining with because it is a bargainable item. So we bargained with all three groups in the room at the same time to come up with this calendar, which has been recommended. And all bargaining items, of course, are final due to the board. As a whole. As a whole. Yeah. Very good. I'd love to hear it in its language. Thank you for that. That's something. Okay, any other questions? All for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Has this portion of it discussed? Good. That brings us to agenda item 5.07, which is the first reading of revised policy 1610, conflict of interest in superintendent Kansas. Superintendent Kansas, I just wanted to.
We've got three different ones that I'll be chatting about today. The first one, 1610, definitely has a slight change of practice in that this is the conflict of interest one. If there, if there is a stated item that a board director has a conflict of interest in, and they can beneficially be interested in a contract, it needs to be disclosed and put into the official meeting minutes. So pretty straightforward. It's a WSA update, but it does represent a change in practice.
Do we have a list of any present conference that you would, would be tearing in high? And I don't, I don't, we don't have any that I'm aware of. So a question.
Actually, so with respect to, like with my, my point, if there is something that comes up in the course of exercising our work responsibilities and things that make it sort of professional or something, is there a policy after that?
It does.
Can you point it out specifically?
Play it out.
Point it out.
Oh, point it out. It's in cross-reference in 6230, the relations with others one. Very good. We'll move on. And that will bring us to 5.08, review revised procedure, 1733B, board member compensation. We'll turn it back to Mr. Hanson.
So this one, what we were seeking to do is provide clarity. We had a longstanding board and we lacked a procedure to provide clarity to board members about what were allowable expenses or compensation items. And so went to the WSA model procedure that hadn't been updated. This is one where we made a slight modification to the WSA one within, the significant one actually was in letter B to clarify about district committees and meetings, the language in the WSA model policy wasn't super clear. And things like meetings that you're having with principals, those sorts of things absolutely apply. The WSA model policy just didn't word it very clearly, so this is just my thing.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mike. That'll move us to 5.09, first reading revised policy and procedure 4110, citizens advisory committees and task forces. This doesn't actually change or what we've been doing, but it does clarify that citizen committees appointed by the board or superintendent that will be doing certain things need to be open to the public. And so you see that language there at the bottom of the procedure. And within the policy, what changes is studying district topics, government matters, which is just less, I believe, but the significance is actually in the procedure.
So Mike, a couple of recent examples, perhaps, like the housing committee, they have budget The language I'm looking at is, is if the committee acts on behalf of the board, would things carried out by those two groups qualify as acting on behalf of the board? So two of them, of three you just named, two of them would have. The ad hoc budget committee was a board-appointed committee. And the things that they were engaged in absolutely fall within things that would make it open to the public. And then the housing committee was a board-appointed committee as well. The bond advisory committee was not a board-appointed committee to give it. So it just, it really depends on the other company.
Mike, if I can, is it the same thing to say that they are appointed by the board and act? Because the language. Matters acts on the afterboard. So as we think about scope, our responsibilities, the board, I consider it an distinction between being appointed by the board. That's the information we have in the law, it was an act, it wasn't a after. And it's just a job.
The, their, the language within the RCW draws out what actions are and has a section on what defines an action as well as a section on what defines a direct action.
And that's what we do in our.
That's not, that's in the RCW, but not the policy.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. That will bring us to agenda item 5.10, which is the first reading of revised policy and procedure 6978, naming facilities. Assistant Director of Operations Kyle Wood is here to answer questions. Can you, Kyle?
Hi, everybody. I have policy procedure 6978, naming facilities. There's some language added to this that has to do with not using Native American names or symbols or images as part of school year naming or images on any arc of Native American buildings. And we don't have any of that, so it's not a substantial change. As part of the policy, there is one piece, number two, that was removed. That's just because it was duplicated, the language that was added on the WSA pro-recommended by policy. And that's our procedure just for higher fees.
Yeah, just to be, and I, the policy makes sense to me, but just this sort of, as I'm looking at the kind of the policy overview doc there, it's a new policy, I gotta ensure that appropriate consideration for discussions, discussion take. Take place, there's a desire considering, and then I look at the policy, the policy seems to be there shall not be. And if you look at the language, there will not. And so that seems to suggest that there would be a discussion, that the policies mentioned provide a discussion before we make such a determination. The policy as it's read, as it's constituted, seems to suggest that there's no discussion at, it's just we'll have a blanket prohibition against that. So I didn't, I, I don't care.
It makes a difference.
Also, but I think, what is the, what is the intent here?
So the reason I put that is because in the policy itself, it says that the community can't submit names. So this would prevent them submitting it, but this actually be a part of our policy. So I guess I should have worked there.
Okay. Any other questions? Good. Thank you. That brings us to section six for agenda, and that's the management meeting, management for forming, 6.01 is an action item to approve our consent agenda. May I please have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Sure, I'm going to approve agenda 6.01, action to approve the second person.
Is it seconded? Any discussion? None? I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye, the motion passes for zero. And that brings us to agenda item 6.02, which is an action item to approve our certificated personnel report. May I please have a motion to approve our certificated personnel report?
I'm going to approve agenda item 6.02, action to approve the certificated personnel.
Discussion. Here, now call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote aye. Motion passes for zero. And that takes us to agenda item 6.03, which is our action item to approve our coach personnel report. May I please have a motion to approve the coach personnel report?
Sure, I'm going to approve agenda 6.03, action to approve coach personnel report.
Second.
This is seconded and not any discussion. Okay, now I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that motion passes for zero. That brings us to agenda item 7.01, which is our term, which will be at 8:15 PM. Thank you so much, everybody. Number one, please.